Are informal and with that we'll dive right into our agenda. We have just one item on the agenda this evening, which is our 2025 preliminary budget. This is our first look at the 2025 budget and the first of several different budget discussions we'll be having between now and December when the council officially adopts the budget. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager and Finance Director Trisha Pollak, who will kick us off this evening. Ms. Pollak, please welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This evening, on our agenda, we will be discussing the budget prep overview, preliminary property tax projections, the 2025 preliminary budget, and then some time for discussion, but feel free to ask questions along the way. I'm happy to answer any questions and Dana as well. So this is the first time you and our public will be seeing budget numbers for 2025. It's by no means set in stone. It's a starting point for our budget. And these discussions will be held regularly over the next six months. So while you're not voting on a budget today, we'll be looking for direction and feedback from you. So when we come back in August to discuss our max tax levy, we're on a path that reflects your goals for the community and that 2025 budget. Our budget calendar includes six public meetings before the final adoption. And in addition to this evening's agenda, we'll be hearing from our department heads in July, who will give overviews of their departments and what their budget pressures are for the upcoming budget year. And in August, I will present a max tax levy budget based off of your feedback from tonight's meeting. In September, we'll adopt the max tax levy. And November, we'll begin the budget presentation for the Victoria Recreation Center and our enterprise funds, which include the water sewer and stormwater funds. We'll also take a look at our five-year capital improvement plan and a final general fund budget presentation before we adopt that budget in December. So how does the city budget? We use both an incremental and priority-based approach. The incremental approach means that we start with current services and base those prior year expenditures off a three-year average. There can be some other indicators that might change those projections, depending on inflation, pricing changes that we receive from vendors. But department heads review all projections line by line, and they also will add new requests or remove items. So all of these are reviewed by the city manager before they're included in this preliminary budget. Priority-driven approach determines how effectively a program or service achieves the goals and objectives that are of greatest value to the community. These items are determined by council through your strategic plan. Another budget consideration is the projected year-end fund balance. So our fund balance policy requires us to have at least subsequent years' operating expenditures in the fund balance. This is due to the timing of when we receive our tax revenues, which don't come until mid-June of the tax year. Other considerations include the long-term financial plan, where we are looking at 10-plus years to project future debt and make sure that we're staying within our state and self-imposed limits. Why does your tax bill change? From year to year, your property taxes go up and down. Why does it fluctuate? Minnesota property tax formulas are some of the most complex in the United States. That being said, there are a number of factors that cause your bill to change each year. So just because you may have a slight increase or decrease in your city portion of the tax bill, your levies of the county and school district and other jurisdictions also will affect your tax bill, ultimately determining whether your overall taxes will increase or decrease. Federal and state mandates can impact taxes, such as the state's newest guide for local governments on adult-use cannabis, which will require cities to do compliance checks, registration, and zoning certification checks. So all of these things may impact the costs of services that the city provides. When you receive your tax bill from the county each year, it's inclusive of all taxing jurisdictions. The city's property tax comprises of only a portion, about a fourth of the tax bill. So as you can see here, for each dollar, the city's portion of the tax bill would be 26 cents. Other taxing jurisdictions also make up your property tax bill, including the county, at about 29 cents, schools at 42 cents. And other taxing jurisdictions include mosquito control, the Met Council, and the watershed district, coming in at about 3 cents. So referendums affect this tax bill. So we want to point out that even if you have the same valued home in the city, your taxes may not be the same, depending on your school district. So Victoria has three school districts, as you know. Eastern Carver County, Waconia, and Minnetonka. And this model that I based this off was from the Eastern Carver County School District. As we've discussed in past meetings, we've adopted peer or market cities from which we compare ourselves each year. You can see here Victoria is hovering in the middle of the pack at just over $8 million, with our market cities levies ranging between 4.38 million to 18.71 million. We get preliminary numbers from the county in June. These numbers can and will change before we get to our max tax levy budget. We've not received any fiscal disparity numbers for '25 yet either, so we're projecting that to stay the same as last year. For the public's benefit, fiscal disparities has a mandatory participation and is set by statute. So this is a revenue-sharing program that applies to cities in the Twin Cities metro area and in the Iron Range area. And it's meant to support a regional approach to development, equalizing distribution of fiscal resources, and reduce competition for commercial and industrial development. These projections are projecting that our median home value will decrease slightly, about $4,000. Our construction value has increased about $10 million. And we will be budgeting 144 new home permits in '25, which is taking the number of new home permits that we've issued in a five-year average into consideration. But we also look at trends in the market and also the number of new plots that we have in the city. An increase or decrease to your property tax bill will largely depend on the change in your property's value. So for 2025, as I said, the median home value is anticipated to decrease about $4,000. Last year, you can see in this graph that it had increased 2.3%. So we're going down slightly. Our focus is on the budget in the city levy, because that is what we can control. The county assessor assigns the values to the homes, and the state legislature sets the property tax rates. As Victoria is a growing city with new home and commercial construction, an important question is how much of the increase of the levy is offset by new tax base? So we can estimate about how much new construction will provide in property tax. And with about $84 million of new construction that will come online in 2024 to provide new taxes in 2025, it will be about $249,000. So this leaves about $352,000 of the total tax levy increase to be spread among the other property owners that existed last year. This takes a look at our property value by the type. So as you know, Victoria doesn't currently have a significant commercial and industrial tax base. This chart, you can see residential values that combined total market value of all properties in Victoria for existing and new construction increased at about just under 4%. And you can also see that no new commercial value was added for '25. And for the existing commercial properties, that total value increased 4.4%. Apartments increased 7.3%, which also did not have any new construction. Now we're going to take a look at what is in the 2025 preliminary budget. This chart shows the revenues projected for '25 compared to 2024. So taxes and franchise fees are the largest source of revenue for the city and make up more than 85% of the total revenue of 9.1 million. Licenses and permits include business and non-business licenses, including liquor license and building permits. And we are budgeting, like I said, 144 new home permits. Intergovernmental revenue include police aid and state and county grants. And charges for services include cell phone, antenna rentals, planning and development fees, and then the plan check fees for billing permits. So that is also going up somewhat higher with the increase in the new home permit. And then other revenues include fines and investment earnings. Overall budgeted expenditures is increasing by 9.1%. Most of this increase is due to the increase in the transfers. So Parks and Rec is decreasing, because in '24, we had a one-time spend of $81,000 to repair Poppets Field Shelter, which will not be in the '25 budget. So that's why you're seeing a decrease there. Public Works is pretty much just staying flat. Public Safety is increasing, and that's mostly due to the sheriff's contract. And general government is also only seeing a slight increase. And I'm going to go through in the upcoming slides some more specific budget pressures that we're facing for 2025. When we consider the changes in both the revenues and expenditures, we come up with a levy change. The levy is the city's operating budget. It reflects how much we need to operate the city, provide services like police, fire, street maintenance, snow plowing, parks, et cetera. And increase of 7.49% doesn't mean people's taxes will change 7.49%, but only calculates the difference in the amount that we need for 2025 compared to what we needed for 2024. What does a 7.49% increase in the city's levy mean for your property tax bill? It means that the median value home would pay $1,657 in annual taxes, which would be a $67 increase from 2024. I also show a $300,000 value house, which would pay $43 more than the previous year. Here's how that monthly charge is spread out between the city service functions. So think about some of the other bills that you may have as a homeowner: cellphone, internet, cable, satellite TV, electric or gas bill. And think about, is $16 a good value to have the streets in your city good-repair or plowed, timely after a snow event, or trails that connect you to other places? Is $32 a month a good value to ensure a community is safe and that someone responds to your 911 call? This is just a different way of thinking about your property taxes and what services and value you get from paying your property taxes. So the 2025 budget pressures include for the cost of doing business and everyday supplies, for us to deliver our core services. We've included a 3% inflationary factor, a 3% COLA, with up to a 3% merit for wages. We have a projected 7% increase in benefits, which we won't find out until October, which is after max tax. So we put 7% in there just for an increase that we can anticipate. Police services are going up 78,000. Most of that is a reflection of a full year of the CSO, because she started partway into the year this year, so that increase. And then also, the county has increased their costs 7% overall on top of the full year of the CSO. There's the 50,000 is to kick off our 2050 comprehensive planning process. So this will be a three-year lift. We anticipate the cost for developing that 2050 comprehensive plan to be about $250,000 over the three years. So this will be just the all engagement as part of that larger initiative. And then the Long-Term Street Maintenance Fund. We are doing a $1.35 million transfer from the general fund to pay for the various transportation projects, including overlays, and some of the design work for the various arboretum area transportation plan projects. And then an increase in the Capital Facilities Fund to a half a million. As you know, the city is designing the new fire station, and we are planning to pay cash for that design services. So this increases for that reason.
Just a quick question, if I could. Is that COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment? Is that what that stands for?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Future budget pressure.
I'm sorry. Can you go back? Tell me, repeat what you said about the Capital Facilities Fund again, please.
So the Capital Facilities Fund, we are paying for the design of the new fire station out of that fund, which is just over $1 million. So we've been doing transfers and using fund balance to pay for that thus far. But we will need to increase that for the balance of that design work, as we weren't planning to bond for that. We were planning to pay cash for those.
Got it. Thank you.
So the future budget pressures, some of those include growth. So the cost to maintain current service levels to more people, our future fire station, the long-term facility needs as we're growing, and staffing needs, funding future parks and trails, and the Highway 5 improvements and funding local street projects are among the biggest pressures. So as you can see here, we're projecting a higher levy for 2026. And that is due to the road projects and the new fire station debt service payments. So to avoid the large peak in 2026, the city could, as an option, transfer more money into that long-term street maintenance fund in 2025. And you could reduce that large spike in '26. And we would end up with the following slide, which would show a 12.47% increase in '25 versus that 7.49%. And then the increase would be 15, just over 15% in '26, rather than that 24.6%. So it's just another option. The tax rate right now would be about a 1.42% increase in '25 and a over a 6% increase in '26. And if you leveled it out according to this slide, that would change to 2.85 in '25 and 3.43 in '26, just to kind of give you another perspective of what that other option might do. The most significant change, as I mentioned, is in the planned transfers for roads and capital facilities. So we have many projects coming up, which, if you were just mentioned, and not all of those expenditures will be bonded for. But we're still working on a plan for paying for some of the roads. And we do have some of the plan already in our long-term financial plan. But we're still waiting for more refined numbers from the county. Kara's been working really hard to get them. She's been getting more information from them on that amount. So this could change slightly. But also in the Long-Term Street Maintenance Fund, I'd like to mention that that includes all of the overlays that we do for our existing roads. And this past year, we put into place a condition index, which measures the condition of our roads. So we're making data-driven decisions on our aging roads and not relying on the age itself. So this should help us make smarter decisions about when the best time to reinvest in the roads are. A lot of our roads are, just happen to be needing maintenance kind of at the same time. They were put in, a lot of them at the same time. So that's why we're seeing kind of these larger needs for the overlays over these next one to seven years. So along with the roads, again, the Capital Facilities Fund and then the funding of the new fire station design work. We aren't transferring anything into Parks Trails or Concerts in the Park Fund for '25. We are going to use fund balance for the projects that we are doing. We would have fund balance to do. So this leads us to our discussion. And the first question I have for you is their council direction to add or cut services or increase and reduce the levy? And then also about the option two, about the additional transfer.
Okay. Thank you, Trish. Council, questions? Let's start there. Any questions on the information that Trish has presented this evening?
I mean, I think the big one for me is, like, can you go over a little bit more of the benefit and negative, like, the, whether we want to increase the max tax rate more this year, so it's not as bad, or sorry, 2025, so it's not as bad. And 2026, can you talk about the benefit, you know, the benefit? Obviously, it's not as high, right? But for the city, I guess, more is, like, what are the benefits and negatives to each of those two options?
Right. Thank you for that question. So it's just more of, sometimes it can just be a nicer way to flatten it so that people aren't experiencing such a high spike in their taxes year over year. I mean, that would be the main advantage. We have a lot coming online in 2026 because of all the projects. So we start bonding in '25. Our debt service doesn't start until paying back until the next year. So that's why we've got all these road projects and the fire station bonding and planning for next year, that all of those debt services are going to be, come the first payments in '26. So if you have all of these payments coming in '26, you're going, there's no way around getting, having that larger spike. This would be one way to flatten it, because we know we're going to be doing that transfer still into the Long-Term Street Maintenance Fund for '26. So it would relieve a little bit of pressure off of '26 and put it in '25. So it's really just a way to kind of ease people's payments into it rather than slam it in one year.
Right.
Is there any negative, I guess, to doing that, though? Like, from a, I don't know, like, is there any negative to do?
I mean, the only thing would be is that we will be building that fund balance. We won't be spending that fund balance until the subsequent years. So if you want to say that that's a negative, that we have that money in there for an additional year, that would be, you know, just the optics of having collecting.
Money just sitting there, basically, yeah.
Collecting money and not spending it for a year or two.
Exactly.
Is there any benefits to, I mean, interest rates seem to be going up, maybe? You know, is that beneficial enough for us to consider doing this ahead of time? That we could gain that much more interest ahead of time?
We would be, we would, because our money market accounts right now with 4M are over 5%. So we have seen very favorable interest rates just by having money in the money market and not even having to put them into CDs. I mean, it's hard to know when that can change. Have a crystal ball. So, but along with that, then when we go to issue debt, we're paying higher interest as well. So it kind of is a double-edged sword for us, knowing that we are going to be going in to sell bonds in the next year. Favorably for that would be that the interest rates would go down, which would ultimately also affect our interest earnings. So, yeah.
I know that over the last few years, too, we've been trying to kind of pile up some cash, knowing this is coming. So we've anticipated this and knowing that we were going to pay cash for some of this and having to bond for some of this. Can you give us an idea about what the percentages are on stuff that we're paying cash for? How do we make those decisions about what gets paid cash and what gets bonded? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So a lot of it really depends on our bonding authority. So that's a plan that Kara and I and Dana will be discussing with Tammy Omdahl on July 11th.
So for the public, Tammy is our financial consultant.
Yep. She's our municipal advisor. And so some of the projects that we're doing will qualify for municipal state aid that we'll be using on some of the projects, some of the projects that we can bond for. And do, like, street reconstruction bonds, we'll be using that. And then, like, for the overpasses, some of those things, we may want to consider paying cash for some of those that we don't have bonding authority for. But there's also a possibility that some of that, because it's going over Highway 5, would qualify to use state aid for it, just because of the location of the overpass. So we're still working hard to determine exactly what we're going to be bonding for and what we're going to be paying cash for. But in the meantime, we do need to keep a cash flow for the design of the project, since we're heading the projects. We won't be getting county reimbursements right away. They don't pay you dollar-for-dollar in, dollar-for-out. So we do need to keep some cash flow so that we're able to pay for some of that work ahead of time. And then decide whether that project, we're going to pay ourselves back from bonds or if we're going to be just paying cash for it. So another caveat would be if there's a sale of any of the land on the 13 and a half acres that we could use for any of the road construction that's going through that area.
That was my next question. I know that we do have some assets that we can use to help us pay for these, and that land, of course, is one of those. The other thing that comes to mind is our franchise fees. And I know that currently, our franchise fees are going to pay off the bonds for Wasserman Park. And we want to keep a certain amount in that fund for our, for any future undergrounding that we need to do. But is there other monies available in that? undergrounding that we need to do. Um, but is there other monies available in that fund that we might be able to use? And then the other question I have, which is sort of related, is Victoria's cost share on some of these bigger road projects like Highway Five. So I know, um, we've gotten some federal funds towards that project. We've gotten some, um, state funds towards that project. So are we solid in knowing what our cost share of those projects are at this point?
Right. I just heard from Kara this afternoon and we, we're getting a preliminary, um, number of the hundred and fifty-two million dollars. Our share is going to be around nine point one million. They're not at sixty percent design yet. She's not sure exactly what date that we're going to get those more refined numbers. But that is the best number that they can give us to date. So that is what we're going to be talking to Tammy about on the eleventh. And I'm gonna kind of revise our long-term financial plan using those numbers because those are the best numbers that we have. And then she can, um, weigh in on what she advises that we do, um, for bonding and what bonding authority we might have for each individual project.
So at this point, that's the best number we have?
That's the best number we have right now. It's the most up-to-date. Like I said, just talked to Kara about an hour ago on it.
Okay.
Thinking about the two options, um, are there other funding options where like, like more grants that we can apply for and things like that where it would reduce that number by some where, again, looking at, you know, taking money and sitting on it for a year or two years or whatever, um, are there other options where like, you know, a year down the road where like, we didn't need that much, so maybe we shouldn't have taken it. So I guess I'm just curious if.
Yeah. Again, I think one of the, I mean, we can always try to apply for more grants. Kara is also trying to get more money from the county, you know, to kick in more. So, um, we're hoping to reduce that number. Um, she felt that that was conservative, um, that we're hoping that it wouldn't be higher than that. Um, but also it's not vastly different from what I have already plugged into our long-term financial plans. So I don't feel like you're going to see a huge change in our projections because when I was going through what we've got in there now compared to what she's showing me, we're really pretty close.
Right.
So, um, so I feel pretty good about that. I'm hoping that it just only goes down from there. And again, any, you know, sale of land would definitely help. If something came up before the end of the year, obviously then we could reduce the levy even further, um, by having that cash put into that fund because that's exactly where it would be intended to go at this point. Yeah.
Ms. Hardy, you have something to add?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I think Trish summed that up real nicely. But just big picture thing, I think, helpful for anybody who might be following this evening, um, or picking us up on demand later. Um, just to put things in perspective, we've all been talking over a series of months and years about some of these big items. So if somebody's just moving to the community or just tuning in, I think, um, just big picture, quick summary, um, the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan is in partnership with the, um, with MINDOT, with the county and, um, the Minnesota Landscape Arboretum and then the cities of Chaska and Chanhassen. And, uh, the county has been a wonder, they've all been great partners. The county has been a wonderful partner in trying to, um, work with all of the stakeholders to get as much funding to the table as possible. We have been successful in getting both federal and state grant funds for those projects, the hundred and fifty-two million. Um, the goal, um, as Lyndon, the county engineer, has said is to just reduce that cost share for the local, um, communities. And so they continue to do that and they've been very successful in their outreach, um, to federal and state legislators. And, um, council, your letters of support and Mayor McMillan, I know that you have gone to DC and have been, um, fiercely advocating for those funds as well in partnership with those stakeholders. So, um, all that work has paid off. Um, the, the money that we're talking about, even our cost share, when you say that our cost share is just under ten million dollars for a hundred and fifty-two million dollar project, it's, um, really quite incredible, but that's still a lot of money. Um, so when you look at it, that's our budget for an entire year. Um, and so where we had talked about these type, this project, um, these improvements to Highway Five, um, for those of us who live and work and visit, we know that Highway Five, um, is a mess and needs that improvement. There has not been any improvements, um, significant improvements to that corridor for fifty-plus years. And so we know it's needed, um, it, but it's painful, right? It is going to be painful to the pocketbook and disruptive when it happens, but it is certainly necessary. And it's not an easy decision for you, for you all to make, but one that you have said that, that you have supported. So, um, I think there's certainly, without doubt, mixed feelings about the project. Um, and these are big numbers. Um, so I, I think I just want to put a plug in for our department directors, um, who recognize that between the road project and the local road investments that you're making with the aging infrastructure that we have, plus being a growing commu- community and having to, um, put new infrastructure and fund new roads and, um, also looking at the new fire station, that's going to be, you know, anywhere between sixteen and twenty-five million dollars, um, as we work through that project. These are all significant costs. Um, and so, um, we, we are looking at, as an operation, leaders, depart- staff leaders, department leaders and the organization, um, they have taken their fiscal responsibility to the community seriously, um, and have really, really worked hard to, um, try to find those efficiencies, those cost savings, reduce their budgets, um, and have done incredible work in this preliminary budget. Um, so of the seven point four nine percent that was originally presented as option one, the operating levy, so what the department directors need to provide those day-to-day services to our community was only one point three percent of that increase. So significantly less than inflation. And I think it's just a, a wonderful demonstration of their commitment to try to reduce their budgets where possible and focus on finding those efficiencies, especially knowing that these big investments for the community, um, are, are necessary and these are decisions that you're going to have to make. So I just, I wanted to recognize the department directors for the work that they've done on the preliminary budget. And they know their work isn't done. Um, so we, Trish and I have challenged them to continue to look for those opportunities for cost savings and we'll continue to do what we do every year throughout this process. Um, and our goal is to reduce that budget where, where possible. Um, but really what you're hearing here tonight is the big driver are those, um, significant capital investments, particularly in all the transportation, infrastructure that, um, needs to serve the community for the next fifty-plus years, um, and then that new fire facility.
Can I have a quick question?
Yes, please.
So, uh, obviously staff does a great job looking right at the future and trying to juggle all the major projects that we have going. Would it be, right, so just for people out there who might be like, well, why the heck do we have all this stuff coming at one time? Would it be fair to say that the unexpected funding of Highway Five that, made it go faster, basically, uh, is, it's good that it came fast, but it's also a little bit biting us in the butt just because, you know, we now have to come up with that money quicker than we initially thought we would have to?
Yeah. And, and it's not going to be quite as painful as it might have been had we not done some of this future planning already. So, you know, I, I, I would echo Dana's comments about kudos to the staff for their, I mean, one of the things that I am the most proud of in the city of Victoria is that we do long-term planning. We know what's coming down the pike. We take it very seriously. There are no, usually no big surprises. Um, and, and we, we plan accordingly. And so it's, it, it keeps us at a steadier level of levy increase over the years because we do, do such good planning. So, again, kudos to the staff on that. Um, but we do, we watch the pennies. We do. Okay. That being said, council, uh, other questions? So, um, let's circle back about the franchise fees. I know that, um, as we are continuing to add population, those franchise fees also grow. Um, and, you know, that's, that's one of those opportunities I think that we should seize upon to help with some of these costs. So can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question about, back to Highway Five before we get off subject?
Yes, please.
Sorry. Um, right, so we know funding has happened quicker, so it's going to happen. But I'm curious if there's been any more update on the bees, right? Because apparently that could, right? So is, I mean, could this push us out? You know, it's where we're not needing it bu- as quickly because, I mean, it's-
Do you have an update on the bees?
Has it been a significant hurdle potentially?
I d- I don't, I, I mean, the latest that I've heard is, um, there are all kinds of people who are rallying to make sure that this doesn't sideline this project. Um, you know, we are hoping to pick those bees up and move them right across the street to the arboretum where they can live happily ever after, um, without any cars running over them. But, um, uh, you know, that was the last that I had heard is they are still, uh, they were waiting for some interaction from, I believe it was the DNR. And, um-
Which can take a while from what we've heard, right?
Exactly, exactly. So, um, that'll be a good question for Kara to check up on the rusty patch bumblebee and see how.
We'll ask Kara about the-
Yeah. I, I know that they were really trying hard. There's a lot of things that have to sort of fall in place in order to get this thing moving and, um, and we, we certainly don't want it derailed. So.
Because we could lose mo- some of our money, right?
Yeah. If we don't get this project going at the right time, we can lose some of the funding. So we want to make sure we don't do that because it, it was quite a feat for the county to get this all cobbled together to start with. So.
Sorry I interrupted.
No, that's all right. Yeah. Good, good question. I will check on the rusty patch bumblebee and see how that's going.
I'd like to just throw some comments and some-
Please, council member Evans.
Points for consideration while we go through this process. So for bullet point number two, you have asked a question, are there additional items we'd like to consider? So it, I think it would be helpful, you're giving us a median home value, which essentially takes all the values, stacks them up, says, finds the one in the middle and says, this is the effect on that. I think what would be beneficial to us is to see beyond the median value, like on the higher end, um, an analysis that sort of can, can we bucket it in intervals and say, if your median home value lies between here and here on average, you should see this and put some sort of bracketing around that to, you know, a- and, you know, at the very, very end of that distribution, it'll be a narrow tail. I don't think you need to spend a lot of time there, but, so that we can get a perspective as to what is the typical homeowner going to be impacted by this? Because I think it's pre- pretty fair to say that, that this distribution has shifted on the larger side of what lies in the middle. Um, and, and that'll help us get an idea of where Victoria lives and the impact on it. Highway Five, though, let's be realistic about this, that this is, we've all been here a long time. There's, you know, the age of this council in terms of it, living in Victoria has seen a long lifespan. And we've known that this has been a choke point in Carver County for a long time so that there is a bit of, sort of, one could view it as deferred maintenance. And, you know, we, we don't know who to lay the blame on that. But honestly, you know, th- this is something that everybody who lives in Victoria is going to benefit from that. It's to have only a ten million dollar slice of a hundred and fifty million dollar plan to do this. Uh, you know, Victoria residents are getting more than their money's worth out of what we're going to have to come up and pay for in, in our taxes on this. So, um, towards that end, I mean, I'm leaning towards, like, I, I would think we would be remiss and not necessarily good stewards if we're gonna like try to keep things lean, lean, lean here and then slam people with a big, huge number in twenty twenty-six. I don't think that that's, you know, prudent for us to take that approach. I think that getting ahead of things a little bit, nobody likes tax increases, yours truly is sitting there, doesn't like it. But, you know, when we can connect the value to what we're paying, that's the, that tells the story. And I think the story here is that we, we would be wise to move to get ahead of this. And then I think that another directive for staff is to, let's make sure we're not cutting in the muscle here and we're depriving city services of the oxygen that they need to get things done because we're, we're worried about a big number of things like Highway Five. Um, temper that with, this fire station is going to be a, a very large number. It's going to be bigger than I think what, you know, wh- we think. We've got staff doing a great job of trying to keep it on the low end, but there, I think that we're going to come into the reality that that's going to be a very expensive thing. And that does, you know, it, that comes home. That lives in Victoria. It serves Victoria. It's long overdue. Again, that's another thing that we have kind of kicked the can down the road with. Um, and, you know, naturally, we don't want it as high a taxes as possible, but we need to find that balance. I think we're a little on the lean side of where we're projecting as to what we should do with this levy. Um, to have that percent increase be lower than last year, um, I, I think that with only a projected sixty-seven dollar increase on a median home value, um, doesn't feel like that's getting us where we need to be in terms of prudently making sure that we're not running ourselves into shallow water here.
Can, can we go to, to the, to comment further on what you're saying, uh, Councilmember Evansky? Can we go through the options just quickly again on the initial seven point four nine versus the twenty-four point six eight and then spreading it? Yeah. So this is option two, right?
Yeah.
And what would that do to the tax increase? Can you go through those numbers quick again?
Yeah. So this, so this model was the-
Option one?
Option one. So seven point four nine percent and then twenty-four point six eight percent in twenty twenty-six. And then the twelve point four seven to fifteen, just over fifteen percent in twenty twenty-six. So it does flatten it out. Um, I didn't run what the actual increase, I can get that information and have Dana pass that on to you all, what the actual increase annually would be at the twelve point four seven. I have it on a, on a spreadsheet, but I don't have it with me.
Yeah. And thi- this is a prime example of we, we, it would be good to see where that's happening at the median, but then, you know, distributed, um, be in the, in the tail area beyond the median. What, what is, and I'll leave it to you guys to come up. You, you have a very talented and capable set of hands to kind of think through what's that, how do we look at that? Is it two hundred thousand dollar intervals above the median? So you're five fifty, five and, you know, what's seven fifty look like? What is nine fifty? What is a million two fifty?
Sure.
Or do you need to break that thing down into smaller intervals? But for us to be able to understand where that's impacting and how much in, in those spaces, um, I think would be helpful.
Would you like to see that for option one and option two?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So let's take a, just a little, uh, poll amongst the council members here. I'm, I'm favoring this option two where we level this off a little bit, um, instead of going to a spike. How is the rest of the council feeling about that? Are we in favor of this or do we want to?
I can speak from-
Councilmember Gunderson, please.
From historically, going back to two thousand fourteen, conversations have always been, we avoid big spikes. We've always avoided big spikes. We've, we've compared ourselves to Chaska saying, look at what they do. They have huge spikes. And we've always tried to flatten it out, uh, from the Finance Committee and Planning Commission, trying to make sure where we're at isn't a seventeen percent increase from the year before, which is what we're looking at with option one. So, the, you know, is, is it a hi- an increase three years in a, uh, two years in a row? Yeah. But if numbers hold true, are we looking at about a five percent? I don't think that we're going to get down to two point three three percent twenty twenty-eight. I think that's a little low, but, uh, is it possible to get down to five percent, uh, by twenty twenty-eight if we flatten it out? Yeah. Um, I think, I think that we keep it flat, uh, flatter than what it was. Big spikes are difficult to get over, um, and intend to irritate people even with value added, even saying this is the value that you're getting for what you're getting. Um, so as much as we can flatten it out over a few years, um, yeah, we're sitting on money. But to me, that we're saving for larger projects, um, and for the projects we've talked about for the last four years, sitting behind the dais, uh, I think that's responsible. I think we have the ability to see what we're going to do to the, and that's not saying that we can't reduce it under the fifteen percent next year, but twenty-four percent- But 24%, we're not reducing it anymore if something happens. It's going to be a larger spike if, if there's something negative that happens.
And I would agree, I think flattening it out, just as we budget, so does the residents' budget. And I think anytime you can flatten it out, I think is, it's helpful for people.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think you can make a case, and there's probably cases to make on both ends, but I mean, I would agree, right? Most people don't want to see that huge spike.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, Councilmember Gunderson's point, we've been doing this for a long time and, and there's value in that theory of keeping things as steady as you can. And, yeah, so I would favor this plan and giving us a little bit more time to use some money, you know, leveraging, making our money work for us as best we can. And, and hopefully gaining a little bit on the backside of that. Okay, let's go back to our questions here again. Additional items you want to consider to, for the future meetings? You know what? Let's go back to that question about franchise fees before we get lost on that.
Yeah.
I know it seems like we've, we've seen a, a graph before about where we stand on those. And, and I think there's getting to be a good amount of that that's uncommitted at this point.
Yeah, so the franchise fees, as you know, we use that for the undergrounding. We use it for the debt service payment on the original bond issuance for the undergrounding through the downtown. And for the.
When is that paid off?
So I have to look, but I think it's still got, I'm going to say it was in like 2018. So it's still got a ways to go, both of the Wasserman and that original issuance. Maybe it was 2016. But it would have been a 15-year bond nonetheless, so. So once those bonds are paid off, there'll be a lot more opportunity to use those franchise fees for other projects. Right now, the funds balance that we do have is paying for the Excel project to Downtown West, that undergrounding. And so it really doesn't, after that is paid, it doesn't really leave a large fund balance in there to really impact the needs that we have for the roads. So I can get you an updated kind of graph of what, where that fund balance is and what those balances would be projected on what revenues that we're receiving. But it wouldn't be enough to support like an additional debt service, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Without raising franchise fees, which would be a whole nother discussion.
Okay, okay, good. I want to talk about the comprehensive plan. We've got $250,000 earmarked in this budget for, or next year's budget for that. Talk about, and I'm not sure if I'm going to look at you or look at Dana, I'll take this one. Talk about what those funds are used for and what that means. I mean, this is a requirement for us, it's an unfunded mandate that we have to do. So talk about what that money is used for.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we, being in the seven county metro area, are required by state law to really go through this comprehensive planning process every 10 years. So our current comprehensive plan is our 2040 plan. So we look out 20 years, it takes us about a two or three year, two or three years of really deep dives into what do, what do we want the future of our community to look like in terms of land use? And so there is a two to three year intensive community engagement process that all communities in the seven county metro will go through. And that involves engaging community members, engaging your planning commission, your park and rec committee, perhaps even spinning up an ad hoc committee or two to look at deeper dives or area, specific pockets or areas. It's working with the different stakeholders like the Minnehaha Water, Minnehaha Creek Watershed District or the WMO for Carver County. As we look at, at that self-growth area. And really trying to understand what we want our community to look like as we continue to develop. And so we know that as a growing community, Victoria has a lot of years left in its community life cycle. And that we will acquire a lot more land than we have today. So our boundaries are going to change. And so we will have conversations with the property owners about what dreams do they have for property development, if any? And what do they look like and how does that fit into that larger plan? And so part of this is Met Council, we've talked about how the Met Council, the state requires us to incorporate density into our communities. And so when we look at, for example, where are all the apartments that we just had this, wow, you're, you're having so, adding so many apartments to the community. Yes, we're required to take that density. Where our local decision-making comes from is driven through this comprehensive planning process. Where our local community members and our elected officials, all the stakeholders that were involved in this process said, this is, if we have to take density, this is where it makes sense for that to go. So we, we think that townhomes belong here and we're going to have apartment buildings in this area. And our commercial development is going to be in this area. And, and so we really take a look, just like is comprehensive look at what our community is going to look like? And how all those different land uses are going to interact with one another. The other benefit for that is making sure that we can think, going back to our long-term financial planning and just our long-term planning. Looking at how we're, our roads are going to be connected. Where are those collector roads going to go? And where is the water and sewer infrastructure going to go? And how is that in an orderly fashion going to get rolled out over time with development? And so we can look at those, we can plan for things. And then, for example, on our 2030 plan, we started talking about the need for the self-growth area. Again, it appeared in our 2040 plan that in order to support development and our continued growth to the south and the west, we need a second water treatment plant. So we've been able to plan for that for 15-plus years because we knew that that was coming through the, that process. And it gets back to some of the conversations you all had today and trying to, as Councilmember Gunderson pointed out, trying to plan for keeping things. So you're not seeing those spikes, those types of long-term planning and discussions allows us to think about our infrastructure, our road connections. So we know where we're, what we need to serve the growth in our community, what type of growth we're going to have, how much commercial development we're going to have versus residential development. So we can plan for all of those connections, whether it be water, sewer, or streets. And then the other piece, the Met Council's involvement is so they do our wastewater treatment for us. And so we, that way we don't have to have our own wastewater plant, plant, which is very expensive. And so making sure that all of those connections that they can plan for that from a regional perspective. So the cost comes in and we have to develop a plan. I think our current comprehensive plan is over 400 pages. It's on our website, takes a lot of time to write. And it's a lot of staff time and community time to be engaging with everybody. And so those costs come into actually developing the plan, having those conversations and doing the community engagement. I think last time when we did this, it took us two and a half years and we spent about $200,000. So our preliminary estimates from the consultants that, the engineering consultants that have done this work with communities in the past. Are saying to plan about that two to 250,000 to do that. A big chunk of that comes from all the engagement that you want. So you could certainly reduce that and we'll have more time as we get more details and timelines around that. We were thinking spreading that over three years will, will give us probably just more engagement. And allow us to take our, our, our time and do deep dives where we think we might want to. Parks planning, for example, one of the things that the council had said is to kind of incorporate master park planning discussion as part of this process. So we envision maybe a deeper dive into that area. But those costs could be feathered over three years. And then we can scale up or scale down that community engagement effort based on, based on community feedback and involvement. And the, the level that council desires to have around those things. Those decisions don't have to be made now, but they'll be coming and we'll be talking more about that later this fall, once those timelines from the Met Council are released.
Very good, thank you. All right, council, other comments, questions? Staff information you'll be looking for?
Are we on bullet point, the second plus additional items or where are we in the conversation?
I think it's, we're open.
So with us growing, I'd like to see, and this is feedback I'm getting from families in the area that play baseball, that play softball, that play soccer, all that stuff. Investments in our fields, from covered dugouts and mounds at the baseball fields. And to better irrigated fields, better, you know, better sod and things, fields that hold up that are durable. Because we're growing, there's going to be a lot of use on them, we're going to have to invest in those. And families and with, with kids that are in baseball, softball, all the ball sports, not to mention the adult sports, that would, that would benefit. Covered dugouts is something that, that families want. And I hear it all the time, why we, why don't we have them? Why do we just have the short ones? Part of it is we'll be able to host events if we have covered dugouts, large statewide events. I know this because I host five of them and, and they're all in the city of Chanhassen. And if we've got to, if we've got to move them, we have to go to the city of Chaska because we don't have covered dugouts. So fly balls, things like that, foul balls, all that. We, the state, the state tournament bodies won't have it if we don't have covered dugouts. To the point where Lake Anne now has one wooden covered dugout and CAA helped pay for that. So there are partnerships that are available. It's, but we have to put some money into it because their parks and rec staff did the work to put the, to put the cover on top of the dugout. Everything else is temporary. We don't have any, I don't think. We've played at D Town, we've played, I've, I know the only covered one we have is Poppets and we don't, and that's a 90-foot base. That's a, it's an adult, that's high school level baseball. And that doesn't, that's a, it's either Holy Family or, or the Vicks. And that's great, and there are a few Victoria kids that play on this, but not a whole lot. A lot play with Chan or some in the little tiny neighborhoods play with Conie or, or Chaska. So if they can, and, and Little League, and the Little Leagues don't have the vast amount to be able to spend, but they do have some. If they have a partner. I think we just need to be a better partner to some of the, to the associates, to some of the sports that our kids are playing. So I'd like to see those items added because I think it'll benefit us in the long run. People see that you're paying attention to what their needs are at, at the parks. And I'm around them 24/7 lately, so just, I'd like to see that, what that would do.
Council, questions, comments on other items? Yeah, Ms. Farty, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, just in terms of, of max tax. The items that Councilmember Gunderson mentioned are probably, if I'm understanding what you're asking for, probably more capital in nature. So we don't typically talk about that until later in the fall. Are you, council, is there, are you wanting to see something as part of max tax? Are you wanting to have a deeper dive discussion in the fall as part of capital? I'm just looking for some clarity and direction on what you expect us to bring back for council to consider.
I know that we have a partnership with Poppets Field and they are in the process of trying to do some fundraising. So I think the improvements that Councilmember Gunderson is talking about are, are kind of part of a bigger plan. That feels like it's down the road a little bit. I understand, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Gunderson, about this is a benefit to our community. It allows us to, to host some tournaments, which we always love to have people into our community, it brings money in, we love that. But I feel like from the standpoint of a capital investment and kind of what we have going with our partnership with Poppets and the Poppets Field. I, I would like to see that as part of a bigger plan. And I feel like, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like that's something we're going to talk about in the future as we start talking through the whole rec center and all of that plan.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, our next half-day workshop, which we have not scheduled for you all yet, but we're looking at later this summer or early fall, was to focus on the recreation center. We can certainly incorporate as part of that discussion what, maybe more specifics on what information you'd like to look at as it relates to athletic fields, whether it's investment in a more durable playing field or if it's something that's like a covered dugout or some of the other examples that Councilmember Gunderson used. I think we, we, like many communities, did have some challenges with the condition of the playing fields throughout, throughout the drought. And now it's been very rainy and so I know it's been challenging for our staff, like other staff, to really figure out with those changing conditions, what the best playing condition is. But I know our staff have been working hard with the different associations and the contacts that we have to make sure that those playing fields are in, in good condition. And then with our irrigation, just to note that, that also we've been making modifications on the irrigation throughout all of our fields and all of the city's irrigation as part of our water conservation efforts. So trying to find that right balance with making sure that the investments that we're making in the fields for our community members, that they're, they're meeting those expectations. But we're also not wasting water as well as being good stewards and setting an example for some of that water conservation efforts that we've been working on. So we're trying to balance those things too. I just wanted to note some of those operational challenges that we're having. But these, this is all certainly information we can bring back at, for that future, that half-day workshop. Where we can talk about some of the things that we're doing, some of the challenges that we have and just maybe get more information on what, what would be helpful for you in your decision-making as it relates to those athletic fields.
Yeah, I feel like that is, the athletic fields are part of our overall conversation or is, is a piece of that conversation when we talk about the park and recs, park and rec overall. So I'd like to.
What do you think there's like, I think there's two different things and like that Derek's talking about, right? Like I definitely think there's probably opportunities that we can look at that are easier fixes, right? Like in the grand scheme of things, raising a mound isn't all that, right? Like it's not going to be a super expensive thing or even adding a dugout, right? Like might not be super expensive, but it's the, do we want more fields, right? If it's, we're looking at more fields, that's right, a more grand vision thing. So I think there's kind of two different, right? We can think about like what are the easy wins we can get that aren't going to break the bank versus what's our grand plan for the future, right? If, you know.
Literally just adding, adding things from a wish list based on additional items you would like to consider in future meetings. That's all I was asking.
No, it's a good, it's a good point. I think in, I think there's different levels of it too. I mean, some things are easy fixes. And then there's, like you mentioned it, there's dugout clubs with Chanhassen, right? So we as a city could work with the dugout clubs of, you know, and kind of partner with them, right? To, to do some of these fixes and things like that. And Poppets is kind of separate because it's a different type of field and the youth. But I think it's, I think it's an awareness thing, right? Some people don't know what we have available today or what we could do with, with. we could do with, with the grandiose field in some of these areas, right? Bring people in and all that. So is it fall is the workshop?
So
Is it, or is it October or?
We have not scheduled the follow-up half-day workshop where we're going to be talking about the rec center and we could incorporate some of deeper dive stuff of this in there. Um, fall would be the budget workshop where we typically talk about our capital investments in park and we can certainly bring information back as part of that conversation too. Um, so I, we're happy, we're happy to bring, I'm taking down notes. So I've got to, down here, kind of what I think there's, um, those, identifying those easy wins, what are those cost estimates? What partnerships can we leverage? What are their needs for those various partnerships? Um, where's that low hanging fruit? And so I think with the, 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 we can bring some of that information back. It's just, do you want to workshop, a separate workshop for it? Do you want to incorporate it into the half-day workshop? Do you want to, um, incorporate that into your, um, capital budget conversation?
I think from my perspective, I would like to incorporate that into our park and rec discussion overall. And then, you know, like I, I, I don't know what a covered dugout, I don't know if that's a million dollars or a hundred dollars. So I, I would need to know, you know, some cost estimates on that, what our ROI on that, you know, what are our opportunities if we do such a, you know, if we make that investment, what, what kind of things could we attract because of it? Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to, you know, the quality of life that great fields provide for our residents. So, um, you know, at this point in time, it's like, I would love to do all of it, but we have to pick and choose. And I think from my perspective, I think I like planning. And so from my perspective, I'd like to see us talk through that with, within the park and rec larger discussion. She shakes about that?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think it's part of the park and rec discussion. I mean, it's part of that topic. So I think it fits.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. All right. Other wishlist items, additional items you want to consider within the budget? Okay. I'm not seeing any further discussion here. Do you have another page of questions for us, Trish?
I do not. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Very good. Do you have what you need from council to get us to the next budget workshop?
I do. I appreciate all your feedback. Thank you.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Last call, council. Anything else to talk about? All right. There are no more items at our workshop this evening. So, uh, we are going to stand adjourned for about fifteen minutes until the council meeting, about twenty minutes actually, until our council meeting stands. Um, so I will take a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.